All right. All right, good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and call a special city council meeting to order. February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. The purpose of tonight's meeting is, at our last city council meeting, the city council had asked that we call a special council meeting to reconsider ordinance to rezone property at the southwest corner of Seba Road and Main Street. So that's why we're here tonight. Property, I'll just give a little brief history on this and I'm gonna open this up for public comment. Okay, that's not on here, but go ahead and do a real call.
Amy Rochette. Justin Cowherd.
Yes, here.
Jacob Boff.
Yeah.
Josie Reed.
Yeah.
Here.
And Mr. Elon.
All right, sorry about that. I didn't have it on my agenda. All right, so the property that we're, that the council would like to discuss this evening is up here on the map. It is on the southwest corner of, like I said, of Seba and Main Street. And this is our the request, and here's our land use plan on the right-hand side of this, which on our land use plan, it does call for commercial. And I just wanted to just give a little, little brief history of what we did, or what I did. So we did notify, I did notify the thirty-five adjacent property owners. I sent them all certified mail and sent this letter to them just to let those folks know that we were having a meeting tonight to rediscuss this, to make sure they were aware of it. I also posted the property with two red signs that discussed tonight's meeting. And then we also put the agenda in line and on our website, I actually did it on the website Friday of last week and then I posted on our social media pages Monday, Monday morning. Okay, and this is the other thing I wanted to, this little talk about on the land use plan. This right here is a past land use plan. This was from two thousand, this is the two thousand thirteen plan. And I just wanted to kind of show, might be easier to just come up there instead of trying to work with a little curve. So this is a land use plan terminal. This is the property we're talking about. And on this map, it's also, you know, being requested for, for low density, you know, neighborhood, your neighborhood commercial. Light commercial. Also, just as a note, the property right across the street was also recommended for that back in thirteen. This is, this doesn't change. This is reviewed every three to five years. And then I just wanted to show you the two thousand five plan or two thousand nine, and I won't run up there, but it does the same exact thing. It shows that same intersection to be, you know, light commercial, which that's what it was called back then, but it's still neighborhood commercial. So with that, I just wanted to show that just so everybody, you know, seen that this has been on this land use plan for quite a while. It's just, this didn't just pop up. And that, I think, unless somebody has, from the council has anything else, I think I'll open it up for public comment. What I would, would ask if you want, and then, then we'll have the council discuss the, the ordinance. So what I like to do as far as the public comment, everybody wants to speak. We did have some public comment that was sent to us. I did put it in Dropbox. I think y'all got it all too. So there was nine, nine emails that did not support the, the rezone. They talked more about what was going to be used there instead of the rezone. And then there was one actually in favor. And I just want to stress that anybody that comes up here and also to the council tonight when we're, when you're discussing this, we're only considering the rezone. That's all we're reconsidering here. When you come up and speak to the council, please give your name and address and, you know, please just restrict it to the, to the rezone. That's what they're considering this evening. And there will be a three-minute time limit for each person who comes up. And I will keep the time. So with that, I will open it up for public comment. So if anybody would like to come on up, and then at the end, I'm gonna let the property owner come up and speak and with the council a bit, then you can deliver any. Hang on, Bob, I gotta get you started.
Robert, you have a three-minute time limit?
Yeah, he can, he timed it. Go ahead, Bob.
My name is Robert, and I live at one twenty-four Skinner Street. Right here, members of the city council. I've been a Centerton resident for over twenty years. For that time, it has been my full expectation that some kind of retail enterprise would be located at the corner of Seba and Main Street. The location of retail enterprises within long neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods, has been an urban planning model in this country and in many other nations for over two centuries. These retail establishments have been traditional, become centers of neighborhood cohesion, offering opportunities for residents to interact with each other and employees of the retail enterprise. I have looked forward to that possibility for my neighborhood. I urge you to remember, neighborhood retailers generate tax revenue at a greater rate than property taxes or residents occupying the same amount of land. One of our more recent residents seem to be opposed to any neighborhood retail establishments because of perceived traffic issues. This proposed rezoning will not create any more traffic issues than already exist at the retail establishment at the corner of Main Street and Centerton Boulevard. And others express fears for potential crime in distant years. Something that our police department tells us has not occurred with the growth of our city. Several others appear to be opposed because of ignorance of how governance and infrastructure construction comes about in Arkansas. A position to neighborhood retail because of perceived traffic deficiencies on Main Street, a public state highway is misplaced. Main Street improvements are a subject of policy of the Arkansas Highway Commission, who only builds streets and roads after the, after the need is identified and projects for future needs occur only if the Highway Commission receives federal or state monies marked for a specific project. Firmly believe large silent majority of citizens are supporting this rezoning request because of the increased convenience of neighborhood retail establishment and increased tax revenue. I believe that denying this rezone because of vocal few will undoubtedly result in future residential that will bring less tax revenue and far greater traffic issues from having residents at this. I urge you to vote for progress and the prospect of income, increased tax revenue from a neighborhood retail enterprise. Thank you.
What else? I'll start the timer after you say your name and address. Sorry. You got a timer too, don't you? Oh, I bludgeon.
Whoever has, whoever wants to talk, feel free to get up and just come to the podium when the speaker's done.
Let me hang on that. That beep made me miss out here. Okay, you're ready.
Okay, I'm Leah Knight and I'm one-on-one Skinner. And I, I actually love the idea of this coming to town, it's business coming to town. But when I found out it was at that particular location, and I actually, oh, I go to the Bentonville School Board meetings or watch them online and I emailed everybody. So I just wanted to let the public know something that I think you should consider. We have a ton of kids on Skinner and I know in those subsequent streets we also do, and a lot of them are little kids. What the Bentonville Public School System is going toward and will probably into implement for next year is the consolidated bus stop system, which means that for every school a mile radius around the school, as the crow flies, not the roads, that as the crow flies, there's no bus stops. So next year, you're gonna be having a lot more riders, bike riders, and a lot more bike walkers to school. And on Skinner and those neighborhoods around there, that's, there's not an alternative way to get there. So they're gonna be going, there's gonna be, and there's also gonna be more car traffic because they're either gonna have to do one of those three things. There's no bus stops now and within a mile radius. So I just want you to keep that in mind as you consider this proposal. I am not for it being in this particular location for that reason. I am in favor of it coming to town. I think it's great. But just that location, I, it's just from a parental point of view, I think it's just really, it's a safety hazard. And we just don't, if we had the infrastructure, totally be all for it. I mean, who wouldn't? I, it's like, it'd be like two blocks from my house, you know, you can just run down there. It's just convenient. But the safety just completely overrides it for me. So as you consider this proposal, I just ask that you consider the, the number of kids that will probably be bike riding, walking and riding in cars next year. It can be a lot more even traffic in cars. So thank you so much for your time.
Anyone else? Would you state your name and address?
Three-minute, three-minute time, three-minute time.
I'll start it with, I'll start it when you, when you put your address.
Great. Todd Wright. Ten forty-seven Terranole Circle. I live two blocks from this proposed rezone. I've lived here for a long time. I've been in Centerton for almost twenty years. I've expected this area to be commercial. It's been on the land use plan since I've been here. Mr. Steele is the property owner. He developed the property to the south. He developed the property to the east. He developed the property to the north and he developed the property to, to the west. He developed the property that, that I live in. He's, from my experience, he has not done anything detrimental to the city. Everything's been a positive in the developments that, that he has supported. He's a local property owner. He lives just outside the city limits now. But, I mean, it's a local person that's developed in the area that owns property here. The property that's adjacent to this is commercial already. I have children that go to school here. I'm excited to have any kind of service that we can have there. So I'm in support of rezone. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have only three minutes.
I'm still, I'm still, follow, be consistent.
As John Cecil's thirteen-twenty Tuscany Drive. I too am in support of rezone, northern citizen and the availability to retail and commercial on the north side is something that is very limited right now. That I feel that as we grow on the north side of Centerton with more and more homes, that we need access to, to some of that retail. I hear the concerns of the infrastructure, but I also know from other experience that the way to improve your infrastructure is to show the city and state that you have that need. We, what good way to show that we have the need to build commercial and get some of those street improvements. So I'm in support.
Anyone else?
Hi Bill, do you have updates on the street? I know it stayed out, but.
Yeah, hang on, they, they asked a question.
I think that would help, just to.
So, so, I, so right now, I, I have written, we discussed it at council meeting two or three months ago, that if our, our doc would come in and make improvements, we would negotiate with them to take over Main Street, Highway one oh-two. I have written a letter to them. There is a letter actually in Dropbox that acknowledged receiving my letter. And what we asked them to do is, you know, come in and put three lanes, you know, two lanes and a center turn lane plus sidewalks down both sides. Then the council would consider, you know, we would negotiate with you to, to take it over. So they've called me a couple of times. They wrote me a letter confirming that, my letter, and they will be getting back with us, but that's, that's, we're out on that. I made no commitments whatsoever and, but I will keep the council, you know, posted, but I do have a letter. So there's a letter in the Dropbox.
You know when we should hear something?
I just got the letter this.
I don't have the prayer to ask that, but I'm just asking.
Yeah, I don't, I, I'd hate to give you a timeline. But I will, like I said, as they progress, now, I mean, for timeline, I mean, I did come out and ask them to do a traffic, or a safety study. It took them about a month to come, so maybe we'll hear something next month or two. Did it answer your question? Sorry. Yeah. Okay, I just wanna make sure. All right, hang on a minute. I'm ready for you.
Diana Allen, two zero one Blake Centerton. And I am also in support of the rezone. It's been that way for a long time, both sides of the street. And all I wanna say is, do you know what he said? Cause he said exactly what I was gonna say. You did exactly what I did.
Jason Steele, one thousand one Walker. I live just to the west of the property and have been a Centerton resident for nineteen years. Actually, you know, all my kids missing. So I've been here a while and, and I'm in favor as well. They, they said much more than I did or need to say, cause we're all in favor.
Sure. I need this timer. Justin, Mr. Zumstein?
My name is Cindy Zumstein. I live at ten ninety-two Main Street. I'm a vote, registered voter and a citizen of Centerton, Arkansas. I'm gonna have to read my points because otherwise I'll lose track. I tried to do a outline, but it didn't work. So through its zoning regulations, purpose statement, the city of Centerton has entrusted the planning commission and the city council with preserving property values, lessening the congestion of the streets, protecting the environment, promoting the health, safety and general welfare of the city and its citizens. I'm requesting the council consider that the streets in this area are already highly congested and we have major safety concerns over the increased traffic that will be created if the property were to result, be rezoned. And now we have even more concerns if the Bentonville, if the Bentonville School District passes the bus route consolidation plan, which they most likely will, that right there is gonna cause a lot more traffic, parents having to take their children to and from school, to school activities and also will be increasing foot traffic, which will create the same problems we have right now at the Grimsley area because we do not have the infrastructure to accommodate all of this traffic. On January tenth, twenty twenty-three, by the authority granted to the city council by majority vote, they voted the citizens and, or they protected the citizens and rejected the inappropriate zoning request. I feel this meeting is undermining the authority of the city council and is setting a precedence for every future decision to be challenged. I pray that the city council follow the zoning regulations and fulfill their obligation to the voters and vote no for the rezone. We do not have the infrastructure for this commercial development or any commercial development at this time. Thank you for letting me address.
Can I write down some, so the bus, we'll start with the bus rep for a second. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Absolutely, start.
Brian Riley, I live at one sixteen Brookshire Lane. Regarding the notice of a special meeting tonight, I've got a copy of the notice. And I had to question myself, why were you having a special meeting? And he said the objective was, we'll get the last city council meeting request. We're just taking comments, sir. Okay, so my question is, so we already voted on this once, didn't we, on the city council? Why are we, why are we readdressing this again? They've asked to bring it back to the council. The council asked to bring it back. So then, I haven't seen information pertaining to the rezoning. Okay, I asked myself, so why, why are we prompting another meeting? Is it because there's a lawsuit filed against the city? Maybe, maybe the property owner wasn't happy with the first answer. So I have to ask myself, you know, I read through the comprehensive guide, I read through the zoning rules. And you know, I'm gonna give a connotation that, you know, the Arkansas State map is a guide. If you wanna go to Little Rock, you can take the interstate or you can take the backroads. Okay, and because a state trooper pulls over and gives you a ticket because you're not traveling the backroads when he thought you should be. Okay, my connotation is, why? You have every right to travel the backroads if you want to. Do you understand where I'm going? Okay, so I'd also like to remind each and every one of you that you have fiduciary responsibility to your citizens of this city. Okay, and one of the things I see here is it's not promoting, maintaining people's property value at all. So I'm against this rezoning. And I ask that you fulfill your responsibilities and not vote your personal opinion, but your fiduciary responsibilities. Thank you. Question, Justin, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think talking about the bus routes, so whether it's commercial or residential or not, if you put residential there, it's gonna, I mean, it's still within, like you said, the same distance from the school, the bus route's still gonna be the same. So I'm trying to understand that comment, I guess, a little bit more.
It's not gonna change anything as far as right there. I mean, if they do, and they're wanting to do. That area doesn't even change. Some further away, yes.
And then secondly, I think knowing what's going on in that location. I mean, Casa Castillo across the street still has an opportunity. They're gonna expand. They have the land. They've talked through it. They put it on hold. And so there's, there's things that are on the road that are coming, they're commercial right there. And hopefully, the residential areas surrounding it understands that because that's not gonna be stopped at this point. They already have, they have the building. I mean, it's gonna continue to expand. I think we just have lost a little spot of that. Go ahead.
My name's Chris Mooney, thirteen twenty-five North Main Street. So my wife, Carmen and I are twenty acres north of the, of Seba.
Can you tell me your last name again?
Mooney, M O N E Y. So when we moved here from Dallas in two, summer two thousand one and bought the Anderson place, it's been kind of interesting because I've been to several of the planning commission meetings. And I've been advised by two different prominent local attorneys in that process. One of them said, well, here's my bill for four hundred eighty dollars. My advice is don't bother to show up, cause they're going to follow their agenda. The second one said, nothing you can do, just get out of the way of the train. So that's the legal community view of the planning commission's process. I didn't. What is this an issue, I think, of the city of Centerton? I think you're talking about, and you'll wanna discuss this briefly, probably the second most prominent corner in the city. The first being where Casey's is. My, I, just as a citizen, I would hope you could come up, we could come up with something better to do with the most, second most prominent corner in a very rapidly growing city. So second, then just three data points. One, it was stated here in the prior meeting and in the suit that the planning commission vote was unanimous. It wasn't. Read the minutes, it was seven to one. That one commissioner had something very similar to say to what I did. He'd love to have come and go to someplace in the city, just not read on the most, second most prominent corner. Can't we do something better? Then, two more points. Since come and go is, I think, an issue in that place, location. Heard several comments, commentaries and concerns about children. There's high school and elementary school. Those people go by that location daily. What is the percent of sales inside a convenience store? Well, tobacco's forty-five percent. This is national averages. Alcohol, fifteen percent. So sixty percent of the sales made would be inappropriate for most of those young people. Actually, all those young people. Second, traffic. There's been some dispute here over whether it would increase traffic if that was residential, which is currently zoned, or a convenience store. On a national basis, convenient, average, average community convenience store in this country generates how many customers per day? You know, Pete, you seem to know a lot about traffic patterns west, you know?
Okay, sir.
Okay.
Ask question.
Hundred is the number. That's over four hundred thousand blocks per year.
Thank you, sir.
So one thing you said that I think sparked, again, this is, this vote is over the zoning. Not over future. That's, that's where, again, it gets a little tricky. So you said something that I thought was interesting. We don't want it there, but it's the second prominent, most prominent location. So what as a citizen, would you like to see there? What it is? Cause from what I'm hearing, you're saying.
City.
Right, yeah, but you're saying it's a prominent residential is the best thing. Right. I guess what I'm asking is if it's the second most prominent, or residential, or you want commercial? That's what this is about, zoning residential or commercial. So that's, that's all it's about. Cause I see your side. I, I actually voted no the last time. And, and honestly, I get gas to come and go. I mean, they have good snacks, but I think they do, the tornadoes. But I will say, like, that is a great point that I think I, I lost sight of the first time is, is the second most prominent location. We know the roads need to get better. The state does that. We know that's a disaster. Actually, it's a dumpster fire. But if we don't say most prominent, we wouldn't want residential, would we? Or do you want commercial? Cause that's what this is about, just voting one or another. But I, I'm hearing you kinda like commercial because it's a prominent location.
Such a prominent location, but. You know, I'm, I'm not a marketing genius. I, I'm new to the city. There's some really good people in this city that could advise. You can help determine what to put there. The Mars are opening a store in the old downtown area. Get people like that, not me, but people.
I think your perspective matters. That's what I was asking.
Just, yeah, I just, I think it just, there's a better utilization and it would be better for the city.
But we agree that commercial, that's what I'm hearing.
No, I'm not. It, it might be a great park. That's my, my son, who lives behind the wall, says, wow, wouldn't that be a great place to have a city park? And you heard from one other person in the last meeting, a library, a library, very nicely.
We have plans for that. We have plans for that.
Yes, sir. All right, appreciate it.
No, thank you. Hey, thanks for the feedback.
Anyway, okay.
Shannon Zappatini, eight forty Napa Avenue. I am for the rezone. Everyone talks about how Centerton is becoming a bedroom community and they don't want that. They want commercials. So now we're offering commercial. And now everyone's complaining that they don't want it. So I don't want it to be a bedroom community. I want more commercial, more property taxes, so we can provide better things for the residents. So.
Logan, Crystal Penner, fifteen oh one Aniston. I am one of those people, I do not want a bedroom community, but I don't support this rezone today simply because I think we need to have commitments from the state or from the county of the state to improve Main Street before we encourage any type of development beyond what is already there today.
Thank you. What else? Diane, you already, did you already speak, Diane? You what?
I just wanted to.
I go one time.
Pardon me?
Only one time. Sorry.
Can I say something? If we're gonna go one time, we need to make sure that we do that consistently in every meeting.
Yes, I, I agree. Go ahead.
I'm Castell, I live at ten ten Walker Street, just a few blocks from where this is going in. Up front, I'd like to say that I'm in favor of the rezone also. It's gonna be rezoned at some point in time. And I know Tony developed my particular housing area. He built my house and I bought my house from him. He does an outstanding job of of building and taking care of the city. And I'm second one with sitting back here about him being a local guy. He does things right for the city. There seems to be some arguments that I've heard tonight that are built on a false premise. This is a community business. It's not gonna bring traffic from out here on the highway to, to get gas. There's gas out there. The only traffic that's gonna be there are people that are already going by there. People that live in that area. So it's not gonna increase the traffic tremendous amount. There are other arguments that I've heard. I, you know, it's got, if you put another business there, it's gonna be business. It's gonna be, it's gonna be rezoned business at some point. It's been that way since two thousand and five. We saw it's that way on the comprehensive plan now. So put in some other kind of business that draws traffic from somewhere. Then you're gonna have a traffic problem. And as far as the last statement that I heard about waiting on the state, are we gonna wait on the state to continue to grow in the city? Because that's what it sounds like, that argument. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Bill Dorsec. Six hundred Joshua Pass. I'm kind of a newbie, the senator. I've been here. I, I bought a house out here about three years ago. And you know, you guys here in this part of Arkansas, Arkansas have got a wonderful place. I've, when I hear people say, oh, this is gonna bring income in and it's gonna help the city and all this, you know? I'm coming from a place where I've heard that so many times. And then about five or eight years, wherever they brought that income in, the housing and stuff, values go down and all of a sudden the property goes down. I don't have any. I built, you know, commercial and all this good stuff. I understand what people need and so on and so forth. I understand that. I'm not against any of that. But when you have a main street that is just totally, you know, you, you go there after high school or you go there in the boarding and that place, I mean, it, it, it's, it's a disaster. And I come from a place where they've had this traffic. And the problem is just like the gentleman did say, if you wait for the state to do something, they're always five and eight years behind the deal. And the three years that I've lived here, the population has grown unbelievable. And I can understand why people are moving here. It's very simple. But I don't, I'm not worried about rezoning it later or something like that. It's just, I think we need to have, or the city, you, you guys are constrained by this, by the state and the county and so on. I understand that. But man, you keep putting stuff up and not taking care of the infrastructure that needs that. You know, it's, it's, you're gonna have more people here later on complaining and, you know, what are you gonna do about this traffic? What are you gonna do? Don't put yourself in a position, this is what I think, put yourself in that position. That may, I don't know what you could do to that mainstream. I understand that. That, that's a complicated thing because the city has grown so quick and so much residential. And I've, like I said, I come from a, a state that, you know, oh, we're not gonna do this. We're not gonna build roads. We're not gonna do this. Then 10 years later, the place is crazy. People are moving out. And, you know, like I say, you guys have got a great thing. Just look at it from a a traffic and not having the infrastructure to do what you're trying to do.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Joe Zoomstein, a little bit ten ninety-two Main Street. Very nervous. I'm not a public speaker. I'd rather be speaking to the animals or speaking.
Just pretend we're asleep.
Welcome to Shark Tank.
I'm requesting that you vote no. I would rather see the, the well, like it is now. What is per room?
Sorry?
Not commercial.
Residential right now, sir.
Yeah, I think that would be better. One of the council members said that if a residential went in, there'd be four houses per, you know, four cars per house. And if you look at the average, it's maybe two cars. And that's not gonna be too much traffic. And, uh, anyway, when, when you, if you were, we live on the corner. So we see the people coming. People are always in a hurry. And when they coming around the corner and it's turning caution and there's cars still going when it's red. And with the kids on the street, more kids on the streets. And, you know, I mean, it's, it's just, uh, of course I see that all over, but right there is, it's just gonna be better. And even Captain Kelly said, or talking with the mayor last week, the accidents were car wrecks. I, I did think that, well, the planning commission is supposed to make regulations, you all. And my understanding that that's when you have the vote and voted no, that should have been it. I don't know, you know, and if you got a lawsuit or something against you to what, what, I mean, so anybody that got voted no, they could file a lawsuit on something and come back. It just don't make sense to me. Anyways, so I don't have much, much else to say. I just hope that you keep by your previous decision that you do vote. Thank you.
Do you have the White House there, sir, on the corner of Main?
The Christmas cottage?
No.
The White House on the corner? I love your house.
Yes.
The Christmas cottage?
I love it.
No, the, no, one directly across from us, right on the north. Now these corners, sorry. Anyone else? Only once? Going twice?
Yes, here comes Judy.
There she is.
Yes, she's coming. Come on.
You know.
Give your game an address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Judy called in.
We know you, but.
Eight zero Shady Acres Road.
You have to think about your.
All right, go ahead.
You know, you, this city has the best future going for them. There, we have people coming in. We have builders. And, but the thing of it is, the reason that we have plans of what we can build on certain areas of the city is called planning. And that is the reason that we do that is so that we can look at the city, determine where it needs to, has the best for that building area. And when we have people coming in and wanting to build things that are in that area, we need to consider that. We need to say, this is our planning. This is our future. And it's done for a reason. And when that property is available to sell and build on, that's what we need to go by because it's already been talked about. We know what's going to have to happen. And there's lots of cities that would like to be in this position. And, um, and we all usually work together. Nobody is doing anything to make somebody else sad and unhappy. And that's the reason that we have the planning and we have the council and we can look at it and we can say, hey, we've already said, this is the best place to have commercial. And this is what we can do. When we act upon that, then whatever else is gonna come up, I know the school is one of them. And Lord only knows, we fought to get those schools into Centertown. We wanted them and thank the Lord they're here. And it's cause that has helped us grow. And the thing of it is, is when there's something else that comes up, once we do the right thing, then we also bring those things to light and we say, how can we fix them? And to me, that's what the city council is all about. That's what the planning does. They work hard. There's lots of um, developments going on. And I'm very proud of Centertown. I've always been proud of Centertown. And the thing of it is, I want us to keep working together to make it the best. Cause there's lots of things yet to go, guys.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Went once, I went twice. Okay, public comment is closed. And one thing before I bring, uh, the property owner up and speak to the council. I wanted to refer you back to this map. I, I failed to mention it when I first brought it up. And, uh, this is the zoning map. And also, by the way, we do have the zoning map up here on the wall. If you want to look at it later and also our land use plan, uh, over here to the side. If y'all just wanted to look at it at some other point. Uh, but I just wanted to point out that the property to the north of this is already zone C three. The property to the west of it is also selling C three. So, uh, this, this only is, uh, you know, compatible with the surrounding properties. Do, do you want to move up?
Which is where Casa Castillo is.
Yeah, that's on C three. Yes. I, I just wanted to point that out. I, I usually mention that and I, I failed to do that. I kept thinking I'd need, so okay, with that, I'm gonna bring the property owner up or the representative speak.
Hey, did we ever talk about, since the, since the state can't figure their ass out, did we ever, did we ever talk about like a stoplight?
Anything right there? Stoplight there?
Yeah. Why, with, with the initial congestion, like what else?
I know, I know it is. Yeah, I think it's some, I think at some point, whenever a project comes, I believe there might be a turn lane added to on C, but that. Anyway, I'm sorry, introduce, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'm Jay Williams, speaking for Tony Steele and Steele Development. As the property owner, we're in a position we don't like, you know, because uh, we did unfortunately file a complaint against the city. Received notice today from the court that we have a scheduling conference scheduled on this matter on May first. But with the council's kind consideration to hold this meeting, I think we have an opportunity to resolve the zoning issues on this property this evening. I appreciated the public comment. I appreciated the mayor's short history that it was this council or your predecessors who approved the comprehensive plan and the proposed future zoning of this property in two thousand nine. Again, in two thousand thirteen, again, in two thousand twenty. So it's not been a surprise to the neighborhood that, oh, this steel development property perhaps will become commercial at some point. It's been the plan for many years. Uh, interesting, uh, interestingly, the city may recall back in two thousand eighteen, the city took widened the road a little bit at this intersection of Main Street and Seba. And in connection with the widening, the city had to file condemnation actions against both steel development and the residential property across the road. City had everything appraised. Had the proposed money into the registry of the court. And, and you, you may or may not recall the result. I'll just use the property across the street as an example. The city paid twenty-one thousand dollars into the registry of the court. And the owners, of course, hired an appraiser to look things over. The appraiser came back, well, obviously the highest and best future use of this property is going to be commercial. And even as to the residential property across the street, the appraiser said, oh, a city, uh, in my opinion, you should pay another forty thousand dollars, which the city agreed to do. So on, on the basis that in, in fact, this intersection, an important intersection, as the public noted, is best suited for future commercial use. And that's exactly what we are here asking the council to do. To consider a resolution of this, this pending matter. And the, if we can resolve it now, it can be resolved, uh, once and for all as to the steel development property by, uh, by simply, uh, the council agreeing that the proper for the use is to rezone it as like commercial. So I'm here to answer your questions. If I can answer anything, uh, a lot's been said and I think there've been a lot of good words shared. So I appreciate the public comment tonight. Appreciate the questions that have been from the council.
Do you have any question?
I've got one and I don't know if it's, this is the right time to ask, but, um, Bill, if you can go back to the map.
This, on this?
Yes.
Sure. With this map or the one with the land use?
That one, right. Keep going.
I'm almost there. We're getting, oh.
We, and I don't know, I'm gonna talk to you, but I'm really talking to Mr. Steele.
He, he might have to answer.
One of the, one of the questions we've heard today or one of the concerns is about the schools. And that, that's a big issue. All of the, all of what we're talking about is what's coming here. And I understand that with the improvement that you're looking to make improvements from here to here, right? That is a
Put sidewalk.
That would include sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Just a sidewalk there on Main Street. So my question to swash the complaints about even though they're not gonna be in the street other than from here to here, because there'll be a sidewalk here now.
That's correct.
There'll be a sidewalk here.
That's correct.
So my question is to make it easier and less for the children to walk. Is there any way, because I, I know that you own this property here.
Sure.
Would there be a way that you could put a sidewalk here?
I'm sure donate the land if the city wants to build a sidewalk.
Okay. Cause that's, that would, that would take all of these years that are here from having to go here and go over.
They cut through there now.
They need to cut through. At least this would kind of make it legal.
We, we really gotta stick to the rezone.
We need to stay, yeah.
We gotta stick with the rezone.
That's what I'm talking development.
This might be a conversation like when it comes, if, if it ever comes back to planning commission, this might be a conversation for them or and, and, and I, I don't know if everybody realizes there's already sidewalks there. There is a five foot side, they're five foot, but I think at some point they'll, according to our plan, they will be wide at some point in time. But yeah, we do need to stick with the rezone. Sorry. But anyone else? Counsel?
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
You have discussion.
Great. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all so much.
So discussion, go ahead, Amy.
Um, so there's been a lot of talk about the land use, comprehensive plan, how it's been in existence. And I just want to remind everybody when we talk about the rezone, that our land use plan is a guide. It's not set in stone. Um, so that's one thing and just keep in mind it is a guide. Um, I'm also, I'm not sure why we are back here. Also, um, I'm the only one that voted no to not have a special meeting. I'm not sure why we decided to come back when it was decided the first time. I just want that on the record. Um, and with the, we talked, we had a work session last night and we talked about our land use plan, the way that we have grown as a city. We've grown so fast that maybe our comprehensive plan, our land use plan needs to be relooked at.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if that is something that we need to do quickly. Um, like I said, I just wanna remind everybody that it is a guide. It's not set in stone. So that's all I have to say.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so I think one of the reasons we brought this back is we need to look, look at this rezoning. We need to look at all possible uses that could go in the C three. Look at this rezoning, we need to look at all possible uses that could go in the C three. Neighborhood commercial. Can't just look at one particular use that might occur at this property. Yes, our land use plan is a guide. But look at how many times through the years we have reflected that this property will probably be commercial. A third thing that we should consider is. Okay, we rezone the property to the north, the C three neighborhood commercial. We rezone the property to the west. C three neighborhood commercial. What is? Why would we not rezone this property also to C three neighborhood commercial? What? We, we considered the property to the west and all the uses in the C three and said, that's fine. We considered the, all the uses in the C three to the north and said, yep, that's fine, let's rezone that. So there, there's those, those, those things that I think about is, okay, we looked at. All the possible uses and those other properties and said, this is fine. And yes, it is R two right now, and people are saying, I, I just don't see houses going there. So I'm looking at what could go there, okay. We could have a bank, or we could have a coffee shop, coffee shop. Now, we could, we'd have seven coffee shops, you know, and I think at our last meeting, maybe we got hung up. On one particular use. Now, we can, I think, look at. Life, health, safety issues. I think that falls within our purview of whether or not. You know, the rezoning, but, y- you know, I just, uh. To me, I just think we need to stay on. Wouldn't we rezone this one if we rezone the other properties in the area? There's nothing special about this property that we should say no.
But we voted no the first time, and it, did we?
I, I didn't.
To bring back a special council meeting because we're getting taken to court?
And then, you know, like I said, that. Even though our land use plan is a guide. It, it, it's basically guiding us in the direction of commercial, I, you know, and if we did revisit, uh, our land use plan. What would we pit there? Decide to pit it as heavy commercial versus light commercial? You know, so, uh, that, those are my thoughts. I had one other, and I'm kind of drawing a blank, but I think those were my, my, kind of my two big ones. Um, and then, uh, looking back at the, uh, uh, minutes for the planning commission meeting, the rezoning. Was recommended eight to zero. It was the conditional use that was before them at that time that was voted seven to one. I think my third or fourth point, remember, but that, that's my thoughts on this rezoning.
Thank you, your fourth point, yeah?
No, maybe somebody else talks at a jar loose.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, a couple of things. I, I actually voted no the first time it came through. Um, and. I think what I heard through several conversations tonight is. We don't want the traffic, but we don't, uh, almost the conditional use viewpoint, and that, I get it. I mean, I do think it being prominent corner, it, it is good to, to have something that is. Commercial to some extent, some point. I think Amy has some fantastic points that it is, it's been on there ten years, but it is just a guide. I think our population's grown quickly. Um. I think we do need to one hundred percent get back to the land use plan. Now, or after this, and really look through where some strategic areas, which goes to my point that I've asked for about three months, we need economic development focus. We need a poll strategy where people aren't just passing through living here. We, we really didn't need to revisit economic development. Um. I. Unfortunately, I think in this situation, the whole legalities around this is. It, it sets a precedent to not, to the community, and that kind of is unfortunate. Um, because now, what happens the next time we turn something down, are we just going to have the issue where we get taken to, to court and then get, get that? Now, I will say, at the end of the day, it is a small world, and I mean. Keith has some very good points. Dawn, you said it too. Tony's owned a lot around here. I mean, my neighborhood where I live. Was owned by him. There's several areas, and it's not about giving him favor in that regard, but. There's nothing detrimental that has happened in our city, I will say that. And I would. And we'll support local versus a New York investor coming in and wiping it out and throwing it some urban loft. I, I, I would much rather have it local, but I, I do believe that there is a best interest in play. And unfortunately, the first time I, I couldn't see past that. I do think we need to get on the roads quickly, though. If this goes there, like, it is going to be some unsafe conditions to some extent, conditionally. Zoning, I think business does fit. After talking through that, and you hear it, I mean, you hear prominent spot, but not. We keep getting stuck on the condition, and that's where, that's honestly where I've been. So, I just wanted to share that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I would say I'm the same with, with Justin. I also voted no. And yes, the lawsuit did prompt me to maybe look a little bit deeper. And to say, okay, wh- what is this about? And I agree with Justin that I don't, I'm like how this could set precedence to where it develops.
Said that the first time, and I asked Rabel, does this set a precedent?
So, I, I do not like that.
A good look.
I mean, the more I look, and if you can pull the, the map up again, it's just like. Now I'm seeing, okay, what's surrounding here? It's commercial, and it's, it's a prime lot, it's a, you know, main and Seba. Do I agree with the condition that's going to go in there? No. And I would have went more with Brandon, his comment at the planning commission. It's a great business, is that location right for this? But we're not voting on that.
Yeah, we have to, not knowing that.
Yes, yes, and I, I think that's maybe, maybe personally, I did get hung up on that a little bit too much. Um, but hearing from the citizens and wanting to understand their perspective as well. Um. It's kind of maybe went that way, I guess.
I think that's okay, if we listen to the citizens. They elected us, whether they're, they're in, in favor of it, or if they're not in favor of it. I know, I've gotten some flack for, um, from that, which, I'm sorry, but they elected us, so. Man.
Anything else?
I, I think one good thing that's come, that's come out of this, um, is. Precedents can come from a lot of different directions, and, and I wasn't at the last meeting, but I listened to that meeting, and I typed the minutes from that meeting. And it did seem like it was a, it was use, use, use. I think you've got to be careful about setting a precedence that when you hear a rezon request, you're just focusing on the use. Um. It's, that's a precedence as well. You've got to be very careful with that. Hearing a rezon, we hear a rezon, if we're hearing a use, we hear the, the use. And I think that's a learning. Experience, you know, unfortunately, there, you know, we had to have another meeting for that to happen. Um, and the residents on that, in that area, a resident in that area, I would prefer something conditional where the city could. Could set some conditions there. As opposed to blind commercial or, or blind residential to where, uh, from what I heard in the meeting and what I typed, there were some. There was some, some things in there that are very helpful, you know, so whether it comes down to screening, whatever's going to go there, there can be screening, there could be limited hours, there can be. You know, some added infrastructure there that could add to some safety to, to curb some of those concerns.
The fourteen emails I got, eight of them were about conditional. And I think last time, and again, I admit on the record, I got stuck on it somewhat too, because it, to Amy's point. You listen to the community and they don't, a lot of them don't want that, but voting on what we're voting on, that's not fair to. Have, but I do, I do think some of the feedback we had last meeting, coffee shops, libraries, um. Food sit-down places, those are all mentioned. So I think what that was saying was, hey, I want something there. Maybe not conditioned, but I want something there where I can spend my money. And I, and again, we're voting on that, and that's what I got stuck on too. But I also think it's, it is important to listen to citizens, and, and this will, there will be a time and place where it comes back if this passes of, what, what is the condition? That's, at that point, that's when conversation may change, may not. But, I mean, again.
With regard to president, I mean, I, I, I think I made it clear that we were, uh, at the meeting, we're voting zoning, not use. That said, I think there were a lot of emotions at that, and I, and I think. It was counted. So with regards to setting a precedent, I mean. I don't want to say too much, but, but I mean, I think that, uh, the council may have learned something, uh. From the meeting and, and really got to focus on, on what's in front of you with regards to, to what you need to be voting on.
And let's just say it is, let's just say, let's say it passes. The condition is that, and let's be realistic here. I'm pretty sure somebody local is willing to work a little bit more with this than somebody new. I thought there's anything else that we want to discuss as a city, and I'm, I'm pretty sure. Is that, I mean. Personally, I, I think that that, that's the other thing that I also think through is, let's say it did. Pretty sure we sit down and tell them, say, hey, what?
Because I'm just, um, I'm concerned about talking about any use.
We're not voting on that.
I realize that, but we're discussing it, and I'm assured that the jury will read the minutes where we're talking about use. We don't need to be doing that.
Well, this is probably why we should have kept the vote originally the first time.
Any more discussion? Any more?
It's public hearing without advertising, but I wasn't here, nobody knew. You, you know, it's supposed to be just a rezon, and it turned into a public hearing. Everybody who was here was against. Well, now, you've got just as many people for it that live right beside. Be coffee shops and other stuff go in there, you know, on this property.
All right, anyone else? Sure, I don't, I want to make sure everyone heard, all right. Worded, see how it goes? All right, so it's something like make motion to read, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen by title only. Motion and a second. Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette?
No.
Justin Cowger.
What, we, we need to state a reason why.
This is just to bring it. You're not voting on the.
Okay, that's fine, sorry. Just to read it, go ahead. You said no, go ahead.
Justin Cowger. He thinking bottom?
Yes, sir.
Don't you read, yes, Aaron Warren?
Yes.
And Misty Eland?
Yes.
Save Centertown ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash one five. In order to rezone certain lands within the Centertown city limits belonging to Tony Steele for medium-distance residential. R two to neighborhood commercial, C three.
Something like make a motion to suspend the rule required to read this on three separate occasions. You got it, Todd?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette? Justin Cowger?
Yes.
Keith thinking bottom?
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Aaron Warren?
Yes.
And Misty Eland?
Yes.
Something like make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen.
I'll move.
Got a motion? And a second. Roll call.
Amy Rochette?
No.
Now, now you have to state a reason why.
Because I don't believe the commercial fits right there.
Okay.
I'd like to say, from now on going forward, every single time we have something, mayor, please make sure everybody.
I, I.
A reason.
I will.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
Thank you.
I agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Sir.
I, I think in the January meeting, I, I wasn't here for that, but in the minutes I typed that were, he'd asked that you guys. Please do that, yeah. Um, I'm sorry, uh, Justin Cowger?
Yes, I also would like to make a statement after that, though. I would like to see some updates on the road pretty consistently, because that needs to be priority.
On Main Street?
Yeah. I know it's a state thing, but we, let's, let's keep pushing.
Sure.
Support any commercial.
He thinking bottom?
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Aaron Warren?
Yes.
And Misty Eland?
Yes.
Great. And we have no other visitors, so it's something like make motion to the yard. Somebody, any second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
If you want to post.